Welcome. God bless you. God bless.
Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen.
I can't.
I don't know, they need to stop him.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna ask them to stop. Hello, hello? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and begin the proclamation. For the Honorable Judge Glenda Hatchett, I've had an opportunity to get to know you, and you're just an amazing person that operates from a servant leadership model that I admire and I'm inspired by. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to present you with this proclamation today. I do want to recognize that we do have some amazing people here with you today. Ms. Zenona Clayton, thank you so much for being here with us. We have Justice Cooper, Justice Benham, Reverend and Mrs. Durley here, the First Lady Durley here. We have Mayor Theresa Thomason here, and a host of family and friends. We've prepared a video presentation for you. So can we go ahead and roll the video, please?
Judge Hatchett is passionate.
She's smart.
She's bold.
Authentic. She's very authentic.
She was a staff attorney for the Honorable Horace Ward at the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia. And I knew right away that Glenda was gonna be a superstar.
The jury's been a mover, a shaper. She's been a door opener. She's opened doors for other women.
The Dixie Hills community is extremely proud of Judge Hatchett and her work. She was born and raised here. Not only was she the judge, she would sometimes play the role as mom. She would be the psychiatrist. She could be the psychologist, the nurse, or just somebody that cared.
She really means what she says, and her work is her ministry. And she loves the city of Atlanta, and she loves the people of Atlanta. She is a people lover. She can talk to the people in the suites as well as the people in the streets.
She used the court as a place to bring back the civility and humanity that we tend to lose in this day and age.
She is someone who really cares about children. You know, she loves her children, but she's not just interested in her children. Glenda is a person who will help you with your sons or your daughters, and I know that personally because she has reached out when my children needed someone other than me.
I'm glad that I never had to come in contact with her on the bench. I think I would've been afraid, but I would've been very nonviolent.
Sometimes she was, you know, point, just, you just need to get yourself together and do what you need to do. And I don't wanna see you in my courtroom again. You understand me?
I.
I, Felicia Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I got a list of judges that could do the swearing in for me, and they said, Judge Glenda Hatchett. I said, "Stop right there. If she can do it, that is who I want."
I've never talked to her about everything, anything, when she didn't have a wise word or a thoughtful answer that helped me see things a little different than I did before. I think that anybody that honors Glenda is calling attention to the best that our city has produced.
And there are many people that would stand in line to thank you, but we have one more special message for you, Ms. Hatchett.
Hey Judge Hatchett, wanted to send this to you to say congratulations on your honor tonight. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there, but wanted to send this. Couldn't think of a more deserving, incredible civil servant. Thank you so much for 20 years ago opening up your courtroom and allowing the vision of Usher's New Look to come to fruition. As a result of it, so many people have been able to benefit from it. So I wanted you to know that I really appreciate it because without that moment, Usher's New Look wouldn't exist. So congratulations, and peace.
I want to give a special thank you to the Dixie Hills neighborhood who's here with us today.
Yay!
We have Dixie Hills on. Judge Hatchett, when we met.
You said something to me, Judge Hatchett, when we first met. You're like, you know, "I'm from Dixie Hills, and I've had to tell people sometimes, 'Don't mess with me because I'm from Dixie Hills.'" So we made you a T-shirt that says, "Don't Mess With Me, I'm From Dixie Hills."
I need that.
And we have T-shirts here for everyone that's up here. We bought extra T-shirts for you all to have them as well. I'm gonna go ahead and move into the proclamation and give other people an opportunity to speak. In honor of Judge Glenda Hatchett, whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to honor you, Judge Glenda Hatchett, for your community involvement, tremendous television success, and determined pursuit of truth and justice. And whereas Judge Hatchett developed close partnerships with many nonprofits and community organizations, including Boys and Girls Club of America, the After School Alliance, the Women's Resource Center, and Spelman College, Playpumps International, which aims to improve access to clean drinking water, and CASA, an association that supports volunteer advocates for abused and neglected children. And whereas you have been the recipient of many notable awards, including the Roscoe Pound Award for Outstanding Work in Criminal Justice, and the NAACP's Thurgood Marshall Award. You also received recognition from Ebony Magazine as one of the 100 Best and Brightest Women in Corporate America. And whereas a graduate of Mount Holyoke College, she went on to earn her law degree from Emory University. Emory later awarded, Doctor, I'm sorry, Judge Hatchett an Emory Medal, the highest award given to an alumnus, and she was named Outstanding Alumni of the Year by the Emory University School of Law. And she was Delta Airlines' highest-ranking African-American woman during her time as a senior attorney and manager of public relations for the company. She later left Delta to become the state's first African-American chief presiding judge of the Fulton County Juvenile Court. And whereas Judge Hatchett has established an incredible legacy of excellence, including through her nationally syndicated television show and her most recent series, The Verdict. She is also a founder of a national law firm, The Hatchett Firm, based in Atlanta. Alongside these commitments, she continues her involvement in the community, uplifting, helping, and encouraging countless people along the way. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby honor you, Judge Glenda Hatchett, this 21st day of October 2019, for your altruism, her longstanding contributions to legal community, and for being a true role model in Atlanta and beyond. We thank you and we salute you, Judge Hatchett. Thank you so much. Ms. Zenona Clayton, would you like to say a few words?
I've been knowing Glenda ever since I first came to Atlanta. And when she sat on the bench, I got a call that Judge Hatchett wants to see you in her courtroom. Now, oh gee, what did I do that she knows about? And Judge Hatchett gave me an assignment. She had a young boy who was on the wrong path. He was from Atlanta or the area, and she was calling me to ask me if I'd take him to Memphis to let him see the tracks and the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., to give him an inspiration to do better. It's, I think, one of the biggest and the best assignments I've ever had. I spent two days with that young man in Memphis, and we walked where Dr. King was killed, and also the paths he traveled while he lived to make a difference. And I told him the story as I saw it. And she later told me that the young man called her and his mother to tell them that it looks like he's made a turn for the better. And you did that for so many people. But especially when you gave me that assignment, I will ever be...
I knew you would be honored.
Well, I tried to do what you said. I said, "Get out of here and do right." That's the way you do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Clayton. For the sake of time, we're gonna go ahead and allow you to speak. And I do want to recognize Judge Hatchett's amazing mother who's here with us today. She's turning 98. She's turning 98 in December, so we salute you. Thank you. So Judge Hatchett, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. To the mayor of this city, to Madam President of the City Council, to all the council persons, and a special thank you to Councilman Brown. He will tell you that I tried to say, "No, no, no, no," and he said, "Yes, yes, 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 yes," and I'm very, very grateful. This is very emotional for me because this is my city. I, born and raised, my mother who is here, and I'm so thrilled that she was feeling well enough to come today, having had some significant medical challenges and recently just getting out of the hospital. So I appreciate you, Mom, pushing through and coming and being here today. But Mom and Dad literally met at Atlanta University and fell in love. And she was from Florence, South Carolina. She was literally here one summer studying in the summer school. And Dad saw her and asked her to come and sit down and read the Sunday paper, and then he asked her to go to church. And every Sunday, that was their ritual until they went their separate ways. And he proposed to her that December, and they married that following June. And they made Atlanta home. For my two brothers who are here today, Paul and Colin, and raised us in a city that has made such an amazing difference in my life. And so when people talk about knowing about a village, and I'm gonna be brief, and talked about, you know, it takes a village, I have lived in the village. And for that, I will be eternally, eternally, eternally grateful because this city has done so much for me. I had parents who nurtured me and encouraged me and loved me and inspired me and disciplined me, with the emphasis on discipline. But my daddy told me that I could be anything in the world that I wanted to be, and I believed him. And there was a city, a community, that loved me and encouraged me and saw things in me that I didn't always see in myself. And so because of this city and because of the people who are here surrounding me today, my village has loved me. And I don't take it for granted that I am here because I stand on the shoulders of mighty, mighty, mighty generations of men and women who may not, I will never know their names, but they sacrificed for me. And so it has been wonderful to raise my two sons, Charles, who had to leave to catch a flight, he was here earlier, my son Christopher, who is now my law partner in our national law firm, The Hatchett Firm in Atlanta, which I'm so proud of. My two grandsons are here, Charles and Langston, who are now five and three. And so I have, there are so many people in my village, too many for me to name right now, but you know what you have meant to me. And I cannot stop today without invoking Maynard Holbrook Jackson's name because it was in this city hall that he gave me my very first legal job. I had just finished my first year at Emory Law School. I barely knew how to spell law. He took a chance on me, and everybody said, "Glenda, don't apply, don't apply, don't apply," because there were people who had graduated from law school, Judge Cooper, as you know, who wanted that job and were willing to defer their employment just to be able, because he only had one legal intern each summer. And I'm so glad I didn't listen to him. I applied, and he hired me. But it was the change that put me in a different route for my career, for which I will always be so grateful. Maynard Jackson will always be my mayor. And I'll share with you what he said to me in his office one day when we were in a meeting, a staff meeting, because he involved me. I mean, he didn't let me just, you know, shuffle papers. He gave me serious assignments. And he said one day that you always have to play within the rules, that you always have to play the game within the boundaries. And he said, though, if you get close enough to the boundary, close enough that you get chalk on your cleats, you played too close. He was a man of stellar integrity, you know, superior intellect. And to have had that as my first legal experience and to be standing in this city hall today, I'm grateful. So fast forward, I then get to go and I clerk in federal court, and then I end up at Delta Airlines. And so I'm sitting there looking out the window, and it was not lost on me, as I would look out my window at Delta and see the runway, to know that Maynard Jackson said, "Stop it. Stop this construction. There will not be one more spoonful of dirt turned here at this airport until there is sufficient minority participation." And so I know that I stand on, I'm here because of God's grace and His mercy. And in wrapping up, I just want to say thank you to my extended family, who I love so much, and thank you all for being here and what you've meant to me. And I thank you. We cannot stop. Quickly, I will tell you, I'll tell you a quick secret in 30 seconds and I'm finished, that I will be announcing the top of the year, a new national institute, legal institute that I will be forming with Joey Jackson, who you've seen on HLN and CNN, to deal with the issue of police misconduct all over the country. Because we cannot give up. We have to continue to fight the good fight in addition to the work that we're doing at the law firm. So I thank you. I thank you, Atlanta, for what you've done for me and my family. I will be forever grateful. Thank you.
Counselor.
I will recognize, recognize, Ms. Boone.
I would like to make a motion to extend 10 minutes for the Honorable Judge Glenda Hatchett.
Okay. Well, motion and a second to extend, and we will, is it okay to assume the time that passed the limit that we had into that 10 minutes? Good enough? Okay. So is there any objection to that motion? If not, on unanimous consent, we'll extend.
And is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of Judge Glenda Hatchett?
My name is Gerald Durley, Pastor Emeritus of Providence Baptist Church. And we've heard a lot about Judge Glenda Hatchett. We've heard about all of her legendary work as a legal person, all of the programs that she's done, the courts. But I want to say something about Glenda Hatchett. This is a very powerful spiritual woman. She has brought something to the courts that we need in a divisive world. She's brought an ethical and a moral stability. We have people that are sentenced and people that are laughing and all the kinds of protests that are going on. But you have given us a foundation in this nation because you have always stayed close to the church. You've always allowed God to be a ruling factor in your life, along with Paul and Clem and your brothers and this village. You've always had that moral foundation. And we, the pastors, the Concerned Black clergy of Atlanta, all of the churches that you've gone through, when we were going through challenges about 501(c)(3)'s, you advised us and you made us stronger. And I think I want to thank you for allowing me to stay at Providence for 25 years, but I got out in time. Thank you so much.
Well, Judge Hatchett, so much has been said about your jurisprudence and your temperament in the courtroom. But I don't know if you remember, but I found myself in front of you when I was 18 years old. I was there because I was defending the honor of the woman that I would eventually marry. I went to Douglas, she went to Mays, and the young men were from Washington High School. And so if you're from Atlanta, you know what that means.
Yes, I do. I absolutely do.
But, you know, the hero gets the girl in the end, right?
Yes, absolutely.
But I want to thank you for being fair that day. So obviously, I was 18, so it was just a few years ago.
Just a few years.
Just a few years ago. But I want to thank you for everything that you do, everything that you have done, all the lives that you have touched. And so even then, as a young man about to go to Morehouse College, you inspired me to go on, because you were so fair. You listened. And it's that kind of jurisprudence that we need in our courts today, that we need that kind of measured wisdom to be bestowed upon those who come before the bar in the courtroom seeking justice. And when they seek justice, it has your face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no council members that would like to say a few words, sure.
Thank you.
Oh, Cooper.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Clarence Cooper. I'm a United States District Court Judge here in the Northern District of Georgia. And I've known Glenda even before Glenda knew herself. I became familiar with her parents, her father having finished college, my alma mater, and also her mother, Ms. Hatchett, who gave my brother his first job as a teacher while she was an administrator and principal of a school. But I just want to say that I've known Glenda for many, many years, and we've become friends. I really focused in on her while she was working for the Honorable Late Horace T. Ward. And we became talking buddies. He was at the Superior Court and I was at the Superior Court. But I remember vividly when Maynard Jackson and I had a disagreement about where Glenda should go after she left Delta Airlines, I believe. She had been with Delta for a few years. But Maynard wanted to put Glenda on the traffic court. And I wanted to put Glenda where she ultimately ended up, on the city court as a juvenile court judge. And she made a tremendous impact as a juvenile court judge, and I think her career just catapulted. And she became an outstanding jurist, not only on the bench but off the bench, because she would always advocate for the welfare of children, those who were neglected and others who had run afoul of the law. And she stood before them, and she dealt with them with great compassion. She was stern, and she did it in such a nice way. Now, I wish I had had that ability. I never had that kind of ability to send us a person who would turn to me and say, "You know, I love you." But Glenda had that it factor. And I just appreciate what she's done, not only for the judiciary here, this city, state, and country, but also in the community, particularly Atlanta, Georgia. So I want to commend you for having led an outstanding career, and I know that your father would be proud of you. Thank you and God bless you.
So we're gonna go ahead and prepare to, oh, you want to say something really quick? I'm so sorry. We only have a few minutes. I apologize.
It's gonna be very quick. I just want to speak about Glenda, not Judge Hatchett, but Glenda. Glenda and I have been best friends since the eighth grade. And so we are sisters for life. That's what we call ourselves. And I just want to say to you, I am so, so proud of you. From the eighth grade, we first became friends, to now in all your greatness. I have been her protector.
You have. Lloyd knows you have.
And we have protected each other. And I just want to say I'm so proud.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay. If we could get Ms. Hatchett and her family down front so her mom could get in the picture, and then others up here can either join council up here or fill in in the back. Someone can stand right up here. Please, everyone who's visiting, if some of you can stay up here, there's plenty of room up here, because that way we'll have room.